The special council meeting is called to order at 6:00 P.M. Present, Council President Chris Bisham, Councilmember Kevin Schabino, Councilmember Claude Curtis, Councilmember Rick Alfred Chase, Treasurer City Clerk James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delavere, Members of the Fire Department, Superintendent Streets, he's here. Next item on the agenda is additions and deletions to the agenda. Before I poll the council, if you don't mind, I have an addition and a change. So I would ask that we put playground equipment installation with a potential vote on this. It was brought to my attention that it was, we have a possible deadline on this. So the DPW department has asked that goes on. All good with that?
Yes.
Kevin, you good with that? Okay, so I will put that on before financial discussion. The other request that I have is item number four, which is employee evaluations of city officials. And number five, the fire department personnel matters. I ask that we reverse them so that the fire department goes first since they're here and then they can leave. And then the employee evaluation will be after. So we reverse number four and five. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin, you good with that? Okay, so additions and deletions. Council President Chris Bisham.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Schabino. Councilmember Curtis.
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase.
Thank you.
Treasurer?
None.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is now playground equipment installation with a potential vote. And I ask Superintendent Streets.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for requesting that you put this on. It was kind of short notice. We've been kind of seeking out alternate ways to install the playground equipment. Initially, the Public Works Department was going to put it in, and we still can't put it in. It's something we've never done before. So we reached out to the company we bought the material from, Playground Equipment, and they gave us a call for $18,000 to work with us to install it. Once it's installed, it has to be inspected, as our playground gets inspected every year, not just by VLCT but other entities. So I'm requesting, we have funds in our Gardner Park. Trying to think where, re-designated funds to cover the cost. I know I haven't spent to date the $200,000 for the remediation, the groundwork in the playground, but I'd like to get approval to have them help us install that equipment. Something we've never done before, and I think it's going to be a challenge.
All right, now we discussed this at one of the meetings, and it was really prudent to do something like this for the liability for the city, et cetera, for the children, so.
Correct. And the reason I rushed it was they may have, if the weather permits, they may have an opportunity in late November and beginning of December. So if the weather is good, we could possibly have it installed this year, which would be a bonus.
Guaranteed of that?
No, but this might. We'll see where tonight takes us.
So may I please have a motion for the playground equipment installation to be done by the vendor of Mr. Burner's Choice, which is the vendor who you said sold the. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion in a second, any comments?
Laurie Brandenburg. In a previous life, I was on a school committee to put in playground equipment for a private school in central Vermont. Highly recommend what Tom is saying for the liability of the city and everything, allowing them to put in, highly recommend.
I want to understand what Tom means by "help us install." Because I'm concerned about the budget generally in terms of overtime. And one of the ways I think we get into trouble with the budget is by sort of saying that Streets will do in-kind work for this grant, that grant, this activity, that activity. And the only way they can do their normal work, plus all these other things, is to have overtime. So I'd like to know, first of all, how much it would cost to have the company do all the installation? And what Tom feels is going to happen in terms of our people spending time doing the work? It's not just for this particular thing, this is a general problem. But I understand that.
Right, so there's my question. It's my understanding they're going to do this.
They're going to work with us. We won't be working overtime to install it. It'll be during straight, normal hours. There, I don't have it with me, but I know it's like $36,000 to have them come in and do it themselves. They're going to assist us, basically. They're going to help us lay it out and do the work and install it properly.
Right, so then you'd like the supervisors overwatch, make sure, do their checking, make sure everything's in compliance.
Yeah. Well, plus all the tips and tricks, make sure the pool is lined up the first time.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. No jungle, do they still have jungle checks? Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm still running my way around the various funds. Are we talking about the Gardner Park Improvement Committee Fund?
That's one of them. And we have reassigned funds, which would be capital funds. And I think Mike and I were talking about, there's some $70,000 in there. And as I said, at the discretion of the council, we also haven't finished. We're pretty much done, the cap. Haven't got all the bills back in that we borrowed $200,000 for, and I'm sure we're not going to come close to spending that. So we have funds we could certainly put towards the groundwork.
Thank you.
If I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Get some sleep. The next item on the agenda is financial discussion and tax rate with a potential vote. So we are going to have a financial discussion. Included in that will be the water and sewer rates. Tax rate is on here because the treasurer wanted to just speak to that. So I'm going to ask the treasurer if he would just kind of speak to the tax rate, speak to the water and sewer rate, and then we will begin the full financial discussion.
Okay, as far as the tax rate go, with the cut and stone, there's no adjustment at all, strictly this year. Next year, it all depends on what the expense side of the budget is, that's how the tax rates are set. We have no control over the education rates at all. They tell us what they're going to be, and that's it. As far as the water and sewer rates go, you know my concern. If we don't do, get some water and sewer rates increases, we're going to continue to move this problem down the road. And I just like to respond to Ann's comment last week about the percentages. Those percentages were in the budget, in the expense budgets, quite long. And the revenue was not, the rates were not increased to handle revenue or those expenses with those percentages in the budget. Okay? And the fact remains, the general fund did pay those things for water and sewer funds. So in my mind, they owe the general fund money. Yeah, they were in there when the budgets were approved. The council approved the budgets for water and sewer. This is going back, and the rates were never raised a couple of expenses. If you want to single out the percentages, like Ann did, the rates were.
So did you have a recommendation? You said you'd come up with, suggested.
So I can tell you what the rates were in this last one.
Right.
Okay, the sewer metered rates went up 8%. The sewer non-metered rate went up 26%. The water metered rate went up 6%, and the water non-metered rate went up 6%. So I would at least do that again, and maybe a smaller increase. Increase everything by another 5% or something like that. You know, I don't think you want to do it all at once. We'll have, better do it a little at a time.
Agreed those numbers again.
Yeah, okay. Sewer, the metered sewer was 8%. The non-metered sewer was 26%. The water metered was 6%, and the water non-metered was 6%. So the rest of my story, I've repeated several times, so everybody can go with it is.
I just wanted you to refresh everybody, that's why we put it on here. Okay, so now I'd like to go to the financial discussion that we have here, and then we will come back to see if anybody wants to bring any motions for votes for that. And on the financial discussion, I'm going to recognize the city manager.
So in your packets, you were given a few documents. One, a memo that kind of just explains all of the documents that were in the packet. A bank statement from the sweep account. There were some questions about what is the sweep account and how does it operate? So there was the bank statement from that. There was a current balance sheet, which is a printout from Nemrick, and a budget status report, which shows revenue at the beginning and expenses at the end, again, from Nemrick and as of the date. And then, as promised, there was an audit of water and sewer, of the time cards. This started with the August 17th payroll period ending. And there were, I believe, six, five or six pay periods in that. Each of the different Excel spreadsheet tabs correlate to the individual time cards for the two weeks, which then go back to the front, that show an average of all of those. I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry, let me continue. On the budget status report, Mayor Sullivan and I met, and we wanted to poll expenses in the DPW portion of the budget, anything that was over 40%. So in your packet, you'll also see detailed transaction reports of every line item. Of anything that was over that 40%, we're roughly four months through the budget. So typically, everything should be roughly a third, so 33%, which is why we chose that number of 40, to kind of catch anything that may be an outlier.
Would you please be so kind to just tell everybody so that at least everybody understands what your findings were on the percentages?
For water and sewer.
For the actual allocations for city manager, et cetera.
Sure. So we did all of the department heads, and then really looking at all of the DPW folks. In your cover sheet, it's going to show the percentages and then what the applied percentages were. You know, Jim had mentioned that different employees were just automatically, right, charging a certain percentage of their salary to water or sewer. So we wanted to really get a true-up and see if those figures were accurate or not. So for example, myself, I only printed out the cover sheet, but my averages go to zero. There are certain hours and certain weeks, that there are hours, but overall, it's at a 0%. The other ones to note, so the city clerk staff, the applied percentages are 12.5% for each, and we showed roughly anywhere from 4% to 8%. Tom Burner's another one that split his salary in thirds, so half, or a third DPW regular, a third water, and a third sewer. We found for Tom, he's hitting roughly 30% water and 25% sewer. The four employees that worked at the wastewater treatment facility are roughly a quarter water and 3/4 sewer. All of the other employees, other than Andrew Patnau, are only keeping track of their hours based on actuals. Andrew's a little different, and it depends on what piece of equipment. Andrew's the mechanic, so what piece of equipment he's working on. So some of them are 85 and 15, and some of them are 50/50, depending on what piece of equipment that may be. So it was tough to kind of keep track of his hours, or his percentages, because he was not splitting them apart. But other than that, you can see the actuals, what every other DPW employee is working on. One thing to note, you know, for Travis, Frank, Mike Brown, and those employees, there's not even an option on their time card to charge to water and sewer, which is why you're seeing their percentages carry to zero. But there's, yeah, there's not even an option on their time card to be able to code to those.
So if they did, it would be an exception, and then it would be altered. Any questions so far on this? I want to take it nice and slow, so you have plenty of time to ask your questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
So Jonathan, I see the applied percentages for the, for Jim, and Stacy, and Robin, and Tom. Am I to understand that there are no applied percentages for any other staff, including you? Or like Becky Tharian doesn't show up here at all because she hasn't been on payroll.
That's correct.
But is there an applied percentage in the budget that we passed for you, or for Becky, or for anybody else from the city staff?
I don't know. I wasn't here during the last budget cycle. I mean, I've heard that the city manager had done 60%. I don't know if that was input into the budget as such. But these are the percentages that we're continuing to go forward. That we were continuing. We've now, since the city council has asked of this, other than Andrew, we're really only doing the actuals, to really determine what this new, what new percentages may be, or continuing at the same, if that's the decision.
So it's my understanding, if my recollection is correct, is that when Ms. Tharian did the budget last time, she used the percentage, we used the percentages, whether it be 30, I don't know the exact number, but they were using percentages, and that's why we decided we were going to use the actuals, and we are going to continue to use these actuals to track for the rest of the year going forward, and maybe going forward that way. So that we are not inflating specific management's percentages, specifically, you know, in the city manager's office.
Can I say something? The applied percentage, that's what we applied. The averages are lower than 12%, but we don't keep track of every five-minute phone call, or every time somebody comes into the office complaining, or every time we forward to Tom's office, or every time we make an appointment for inspections. It's just impossible to keep track of that stuff.
Yeah, your department is more overall using this area anyway. So it was more to look at those, the management that was not really working in this area, and why those numbers were, percentages were so high.
We have billings and mailings full-time a year, but all our stuff is hundreds of little things out there.
Kevin, you have any questions?
I was hoping for something very simple. A memo or a one-page document that had labor expenses for the quarter and material expenses for the quarter, prepared by someone other than myself, because I don't know enough about it, that I could simply look at and make a decision. I have never been a fan of percentages in the water and sewer. Whatever each person makes should come out of the general fund. And the water and sewer, except for the people at the sewer plant, the four people. I don't like it, and I won't vote for a water sewer increase until I can add real numbers. So I know a lot of work went into this, but I have to do all this math, and I don't want to do all of that. I just want a document that says labor for a quarter is this amount. And we have the percentages, and then I would like the expenses. I think it's swayed in a way that isn't real to me, to have these percentages. I think it's quite simple, but it's not simply presented.
So before you go to the expense side, we're just talking right now about the allocation of salary before I go into getting to the expenses.
Just tell me, I don't agree with the percentages.
But right now, do you have specific questions shy of percentages, and how the change in percentages are now shown? Which is what we wanted to see, is when you use the real time, how is that going to look? What is the distinction between how it was being built to what the percentage actually would have been?
So what dollar amount equates to these percentages?
Right, so Jonathan, can you walk through that part again?
Sure. So, and you're just looking at this spreadsheet. Okay. So the summary spreadsheet, the percentages on the left-hand side are actual hours worked. Correct. So these two columns on the left are the percentages. And if you go back to each individual tab, you can see the total number of hours that correlate to the percentages. So these are just actual hours based, so if they work, so for example, Tom, 30%. He worked 40 hours. 15 or so hours are water, same thing on sewer. But we did not do, turn that into a dollar amount, but we certainly can do that. But yes, that's just a little more work, because part of that's salaries, benefits, that eventually should all be calculated as part of this. But these were just hours.
I'm not sure what to call this, I mean, area, it's the time study of how time's allocated throughout, so I appreciate this being done. And I just forgot my question.
Take your time. We'll let Clark ask another question that doesn't take too long. We're talking about one question.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Since we know the staff, we know what position they're on. Could it be a steep D multiplication of that percent by their, oh, their salary?
That's exactly.
I think this is a great first step, and I think that leads perfectly into that next step of finding those numbers. That answered mine.
Okay. Are you further?
Not on this part.
Okay, so the next piece. Do you just want me to go through?
Yeah, and then we can stop and ask questions as we go.
To be honest, I didn't see anything crazy out of the ordinary. The ones, if I just hold this.
Detailed transactions.
Yes, detailed transactions. So this shows, this is a detailed transaction report. On your top left-hand portion, you're going to see the line item and the budget and the title that's associated with it. So again, none of these were, stood out as crazy. I did highlight everything over 40% and just put it in here. But some of these were, you know, we had a $500 or so budget, and we've spent $300. So out of a seven-point-something-million-dollar budget, it's a small fish to me, but we did highlight it. I guess the only notable concern for me, and I don't know why this was done this way, maybe the council has an understanding, but it seems that, so for example, page 1, 2, 3, 4, there's a vacation line item for highway that we've posted $11,500 to with a $0 budget. So when I was in Cambridge, even vacation, sick time, all of that had a budget associated with it, depending on, you know, number of hours that each employee had. So I mean, you put an estimate in there, not saying that it's going to be 100% accurate, because things change throughout the year. But I just, these were a couple of line items that just didn't have a budget associated with it, but that we're charging payroll to.
So we need to actually look, drill into that, and let's drill down into that and see what they did?
Yep.
And then let's reallocate it appropriately for when we're doing that and do that.
Correct, so going forward.
So we need to make a note for that?
So that was really the only one that kind of stood out to me, is, you know, they were very high over their budget, but it's because they didn't have a budget.
They didn't have a budget.
They didn't have a budget. Same thing on sick time, same thing on holidays. You know, other than that, I think, you know, some of it, for example, Long Bridge Lighting, we didn't have a budget, but we spent $85, so it's not huge. But I think those were the two that were just of notable concern, or three, was the holiday, vacation, and sick time.
Okay. Would you walk us through the sweep account, and then we'll come back to the expenses if anybody has any questions, because I noticed everybody's still looking at some reports.
Sure. So sweep, the way the sweep account works, and the sweep account is not listed in Nemrick, it's just a separate bank account that Jim has. And the way that the sweep account and operating account work is if the operating account gets over $450,000 in it, it automatically pushes money into the sweep account for safe storage. If the operating account comes below, I think it was $100,000, Jim?
Yep.
Then that sweep account will automatically refill the operating account up to that $100,000. So it's just a way to protect that money, in that way you're not having all of your, you know, $10 million that we've received in property taxes just sitting in an operating.
Any questions on the sweep account? Just hold on your thoughts, we're coming, okay? Do you have any questions on the expense explanation?
I just see a percentage, I say dollar. Are you talking about expenses?
I mean expenses.
Water and sewer, right?
Which expenses? Which expenses do you have? The general fund one? I just want to make sure. They're all the same.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find out, is which path we're on with these questions.
Do we have a separate document for water and sewer expenses?
It's all in the budget status report. Your water and sewer are funds eight and nine, and so we'll be towards the back. So sewer is fund eight, and that starts on page 52.
Let me know if I have it right.
No, he doesn't have it right there.
Do or don't?
Probably not. Here, you can take mine.
Budgets, it's the.
Here you go. Here's the budget status report. Three pages away.
That starts your sewer department income section. And so if you come down 54. So the middle of page 54 says total of sewer collection. That's going to be your revenue side of your sewer. So we're at, we budgeted $234,000, $234.91, and we brought in $77,555. or thirty-three percent of our sewer revenue we have brought in after quarter, after the first third. So we're roughly where we should be in terms of sewer revenue.
Yep.
The sewer, and then it goes right into the sewer expense side of things, with it on fifty-seven. So we budgeted roughly one point eight million, and we've spent three hundred and ninety thousand for twenty-one point five percent of our sewer budget. If we continue, we're going to go into fund nine, which is our water fund. The total revenue is, is on that same page of one point one, and we brought in two fifty-eight for twenty-two point one six percent of our water revenue. So we're a little low on the water side. Then if we continue all the way to the last page on the back, total expenditures, this one's a little skewed, and I kind of made a note to this in the memo, it's showing a budget of one point one with an expenditures of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, or seventy-nine percent of our budget, partly due to the water tower project, and we paid JPC card, and we're just waiting for that revenue on the ARPA side and the grants to offset. So that one again, just looks a little skewed, but if you go back one page, you can see middle of the line, east side water tower project, we've spent seven hundred and three thousand dollars, and we don't have a budget associated with it. So we're seven hundred.
So that's the one that we have.
And that's the one we, we just need to show that revenue side to offset it on the other side, but that's just why you're seeing your percentage skewed, because we've spent seven hundred thousand dollars without a budget for that money.
Any questions on this?
Not just pertaining to this, but I notice across the board that the workman's comp is increased in almost everything, is there a reason for that?
Could just be what budget is in act, in actuals, and we could have, we could have had some claims last year that weren't in the policy, and now when we've got the bill, we're starting to show.
My other, I don't know if it's a question or just a question, is that we have taken in twenty-four point eight to five percent revenue that we've spent.
Where? On general fund?
No, sorry, the total revenue for sewer department, so page fifty-three.
Fifty-three, yep.
Yeah, we're at twenty-four point eight five percent.
So revenue, yep.
And then our expenditures have been.
Thirty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our revenue is a little low.
So it's not so much a question, just an observation?
Yep.
That's all I have as of right now.
Kevin, you good?
Do we have preliminary numbers for the close of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four actuals at this point? Have I, have we been given those and I've missed it?
No.
No, we haven't.
So we don't know what our actuals were for last year?
No.
So, I guess, I'm not quite sure when to raise this question, so I'm just going to put it on the table, and we can deal with it now or later. But I've tried to go back as far as two thousand fourteen and track budget against actual year over year on revenue. I, I, it's complicated, and I tried to simplify it as much as I could, and I may have made mistakes, but up until two thousand twenty, you can, you can roughly correlate what we were budgeting each year based on the actual revenue we had received for sewer and water the previous year. Sometimes there was a discrepancy, but it, it tended to either, it tended to kind of work itself out, as far as I can tell over time. But, starting around two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted in twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted two point five five six million against revenue we'd collected the previous year of two point three four eight million, which is to say we'd budgeted for a two hundred thousand dollar increase that year over what we had made the previous year. The year after that, we budgeted to roughly two point seven million dollars, and our receipts had actually dropped the, the previous year from two point three five to two point two seven five. So in that case, we actually budgeted four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars more than our previous year's income. And then this last year, twenty-three, I guess, twenty-three, twenty-four, we budgeted two point eight million dollars against the previous year's receipts of two point three three seven, an increase of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over what we had taken in the previous year. And this year, we budgeted two point nine seven six, roughly, according to the figures you just gave us. And we don't know what we spent last year, but I don't have any reason to believe that it won't be a similar number. So what I'm trying, I've also looked, just so you know, I don't quite understand what the correlation is, but I assume there must be one, at the correlation between what we were budgeting for revenue and our operational surplus and deficit year over year for the general, the sewer, and the water funds. And honestly, if you go back as far as two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had a phenomenal year, somehow, the general fund showed an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus, and the water and sewer budgets combined showed over five hundred thousand dollars surplus. But, in the last two years, the sewer and water combined showed an operational deficit of nearly five hundred thousand dollars, and last year, an operational deficit of nearly four hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm, I'm prepared to try and begin to take some action to address the challenge about where we are financially right now. But the challenge that I'm feeling is, I can't tell why we're in the situation we're in. And I'm loathe to make long-term decisions without understanding how in the world we went from operational surpluses that were approaching, well, that were over a million dollars as recently as five years ago, and as recently as two years ago, two thousand, I'm sorry, four years ago, two thousand nineteen and twenty, we had an operational surplus of, by my rough count, two hundred twenty-five, three twenty-five, over, over about five hundred thousand dollars there, right? So I want, I'm trying to figure out how in the last three years, we've gone from operational surpluses to operational deficits. Overall, I'm not even talking about separating them at the moment, and it's even more pronounced if you look just at water and sewer. And some of it, you know, Ann pointed out last week, that I think some of it is probably attributable to the practice of the percentage. And I actually found a reference in two thousand eighteen, nineteen annual report by the city manager and her narrative, that that was the year they began kind of deliberately parsing out costs of employees across departments. So I can see where that began to take place. It's not a direct correlation to the deficits that grew, as far as I can tell, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to answer the long-term questions if we're not going to look deeply at the budget and try and understand how we break the cycle of budgeting for far more income than we actually know we can bring in. And it looks to me, honestly, like we've done what I would call expense budgeting. We look at what the expense was last year, and whatever it was, we say that's how much money we're going to make this year, and we budget as if that's going to happen magically, it's going to come out of nowhere. But it has no bearing, as far as I can tell whatsoever, on the revenue side with what we can actually expect to take in. So, some of it, I think, you know, we, we simply have to raise the rates, I'm not disagreeing with Jim's analysis of that, but I can't tell how much, and I don't, I don't really want to try and make a plan tonight to fix it, the whole thing, even to say, okay, we're going to try and do twenty-five percent now, and twenty-five percent six months from now, and twenty-five percent six months after that, to try and make it up. I mean, if you did it that way, my rough calculation is we'd have to raise rates overall by about fifty percent, water and sewer rates over what they currently are, that we've been, we've been claiming we are going to take in fifty percent more than we actually take in each year, if, if I read it correctly. So, somebody somewhere is going to have to help me understand what is, what is going on here exactly that's gotten us into this position?
And I think, we want, and I'm going to let Jim speak to, of course, but I think that's the whole reason why we said we're going to start to do actual numbers, because these were so skewed that they became, in, in our minds, almost unreliable for us to say, what are we going to do to go forward to fix? So you're pretty much starting at square one, which is sad, and so you can't really compare it, because if it's one year, it's going to be sixty-five percent, and one year it's going to be fifteen percent, and whatever the narrative is.
It's bounced all over.
It's just pulling numbers out of the air. And so now, and what Jim is saying, and I think he has been saying that for years, is pay attention, we need to look at this, and we need to stop doing that, as well as the auditors have said that over and over from my conversations with them, they were like, need to stop doing it. So, I don't think saying going back to twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen is going to solve our problem, what we have to do is say, this is how it's going to be done now going forward, and we have to come up with the real numbers going forward, because otherwise we will sit here.
Yeah, I, so let me speak to that.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't, I don't raise this because I'm trying to, even, I'm not even really trying to place blame, I'm trying to understand where the, what it was that took place, that took us from operational surpluses to operational deficits. Because if we could isolate whatever it was that took place at that moment, it would seem to me that would be very helpful to us going forward. Having said that, I don't disagree, Madam Mayor, with your analysis, that we're going to have to kind of take things as they are now, and the first step, which I appreciate the fact that we now have a document showing us what it would be, is to reallocate the, the wage question appropriately, the, the salary questions appropriately. But, you know, I, I guess, you know, part of my concern is that a month and a half from now, we're going to be sitting here looking at budget for the next year, and I'm in no way prepared to pa, to pass another deficit budget. And it looks to me like we, we've done that pretty consistently now for three, maybe four or five years in a row.
So let's let Jim speak a little bit.
I think, I think you're right, Rick. I think in years past, they budgeted expenses and they budgeted revenue side to balance the two, but they don't bring in enough revenue, which is equates, equates to the rates. Now, from all my information, I went back and checked every audit in two thousand sixteen, okay, when I first did this. In two thousand sixteen, there were just about a break-even point.
Yep.
From that point on, they lost money, a little more every year up to this point, okay? And that's where you get, if you check the due-to, due-froms in the trial balance on each one, you see the minus amount in the revenue when the due-to from the water, that means they owe the general fund that amount, same thing in the sewer. If you look at the due-to, due-from in the general fund, that one point five or million, whatever it is, and you add up the two, due-to, due-from, from the sewer and water, it's almost exactly what that is. But you're right, they budgeted the expense and budgeted the revenue to match the expense without raising the rates, and that's, that's where we are.
Yeah, and so some plug numbers.
And to me, you can't go back, I mean, Ann may have a point on the salary allocations, but you can't go back eight years and just, you know, and my money wipe off a million and a half dollars if they owe. I mean, those were budgeted funds.
No, go ahead.
Can you? Those are budgeted funds, okay, that weren't, and revenue was not raised for, but the council and the voter, the council passed those budgets with those salary allocations in there. The fact remains, the revenue was not raised to cover that, and the general fund paid it. So there's where your surplus, if there was any in the general fund, had eaten away.
So can I ask one more question, Jim, specifically?
Yeah, I'm not an accountant, but I'll try the best.
Well, I appreciate your help, and I, I think we're all hamstrung by the lack of a numbers person sitting at the desk in there, so I get that too. If we were to do, follow your suggestion of raising the sewer, the sewer and water rates, both metered and non-metered roughly the same increase as last time, can you tell us what an eight percent, a twenty-six percent, and two-six percent increases actually turns into in real money? Like, how much money is that going to increase our revenue side?
I can get that number for you exactly, but I think the last time you raised it was somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty thousand dollars more of income, all right? But, like I said before, if you're losing between four and five hundred thousand dollars a year, it's going to take several hundred and forty thousand dollar increases to, to get to even, right? And then you got to, then you got to think about the increase in expenses from that after you break even going forward.
Which is not to speak of the interest we're going to pay on the debt that we're creating in the process.
Exactly.
Right. I'm sure I'll think of other questions, but I'll back.
Well, good, no, but that's the point of tonight. The point of tonight is to get air these questions out, so we can then come, I mean, this isn't the last discussion, this is just the first discussion.
And I just want everybody to be aware, those figures that I can overcome straight from the audits, operational losses, that does not include the depreciation. If it included depreciation, it'd be worse.
Right.
Do you have any questions or just statements?
Just another clarification, I think I know the answer, but, front page says taxes collected is, the actual is ten thousand, two hundred, ten million, thank you. All right, that's for the school?
That includes the school.
Okay.
Which is why you're seeing it at two hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, but half of that, other than half of that's going to disappear from December fifth.
Right. So I guess my other question is, since this is, I appreciate Rick's numbers there, do you have any inkling of what changed that caused this need for pulling more and more out of the general fund?
Well, the need for pulling more out of the general fund, because water and sewer have expenses.
Right.
And vendors expect to get paid, and there's no money in a lot of sewer funds to pay them, and the general fund, with money over the beta, bills have to be paid for this.
Absolutely. I don't know if you knew of any like inkling other than the lack of increases over the last eight years, plus the increase of cost of everything?
No, I mean, I mean, the expenses go up every year, you know? I mean, for years they ran what, three percent maybe, all of a sudden here, two years in a row, we hit fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent increase, but, to me, it all relates back to the, to the rate increases.
Right.
They just, they just weren't keeping up with the revenue we expected.
And I think part of it was, the city report was very kind to residents and not increasing anything for a couple years from COVID, but we got it past that, that's five years ago now.
That, that's true, historically, you had the, you had the lowest water sewer rates.
Right.
And even with the increases, I think we're going to be pretty competitive.
Pretty conservative.
Competitive with everybody else. I don't, I don't know if that's, if Rick's mind or not, but that's all.
I don't know that I can be satisfied, Jim, I'm not pointing fingers at this point.
Yeah, I think pretty much people are starting to see now the numbers that are coming forward.
I don't want it to cost people more money, but.
Well, right, nobody wants to.
And the other thing on the salary issue is either if we move them back to general fund, and the tax rate's going to go up.
But the key is that you have to have the right numbers now, and that's the key, is you have to use the actual numbers.
Yeah, if you want to comment, Rick, for some of the audits, they can go right to the pages, so they go right down three pages or so, and at the bottom says loss from operations, with a loss every year for the last seventy years.
So, I confess that I haven't lived in the city long enough to really understand my own water and sewer bill. So can somebody help me understand, maybe you can do it, Jim? If we made an increase of this much, it's going to net us maybe a hundred and twenty grand, what is, what's the impact on a typical household when we do that in terms of their water and sewer bill?
Well, I, I can go by, I can go by the standard non-metered rate, all right?
Yes.
I think it went from one seventy-two to one, one ninety-something for this last increase, somewhere in there, and that's why I suspect it would be another fifty, twenty bucks, a quarter.
A quarter, right.
Now, that's off the top of my head, that's not.
I, I won't hold you to it, it's just helpful to having a rough idea of what we're really talking about.
Looking at Jonathan's memo, it said the sewer fund revenue was twenty-four point eight five percent, and the expenditure is twenty-one point five, so that means we've taken in three percent more than we, not needed, but that's the word I'm going to use, because the sewer fund able to pay a little bit of this water fund as well, is that just one general fund, or are they two separate completely?
Well, Tom Sewer, no, it's not here, but I can tell, years ago, I mean, years ago, when his wife did his only first credit, I don't know if I get this right, no? The thing is that the sewer funds consistently owed his money, and the water fund would bail him, bail that side of it out.
Right.
It might be a bit of a special, but one of them bailed the other one out for years, okay, for the water was, well, so it was losing money, so it, and now it's got to the point where they're both, water not. they're both, water not losing as much as the sewer by any means.
Sewer's, sewer's not losing as much as the water.
Well.
So if it's all right with the council, I'm going to allow, conservatively, within very tight parameters, although I have some comments from the public just on what we're discussing here, is that all right with you? If we ask, be published, I know they have some statements anyone make, as long as you stay within these parameters of what we're discussing, okay? Please. Are you good with that? Ann, do you want to go first? You wanted to speak to?
Yeah, I certainly have no problem with increasing rates to meet reasonable expenses in the future. What really upset me was the thought that you were going to go back in time and charge the water and sewer budgets for the excesses that were perpetrated, maybe, that's, maybe that's an opinion, that were, I don't know how to say it without saying what I.
The numbers that were used.
Pardon?
The numbers that were used.
The numbers that were used. And when Jim says, you know, the council approved these numbers with those percentages included, you can't imagine the year, which was only two or three years ago, that I asked a question of Laura Dolgan as to where her income was, because it clearly wasn't all in administration. And I was expecting her to say, oh, it was in some other part of the general fund. And she said, no, it's in water and sewage. The shock on the faces of the, of most of the members of the council, and then when I asked her, well, how much? And she said, 60%. And I said, you mean you work 60% of your time, three out of every five days in water and sewage, and only two days on average in all the other work you do for the city? And she said, that's it, exactly. And that was the first time, I think, that they understood that, that these percentages were being charged. When Rebecca came on, nobody even asked the council how her salary was going to be distributed, and it turned out to be 45% in water and sewage. So the council did not know, and I really hope, I mean, the thing that would upset me most is if you went back and you said, oh, now, water and sewage owes the general fund, when water and sewage had been raped for years, you know? The reality is, many years ago, there was a surplus, a large surplus in water and sewage. We're talking about, you know, maybe under John Ward's time, and he did a redistribution one year, and it really should have only been for that one year, so they could pay some, for some street spurt being done, and he got his salary paid out of water and sewage. But then that, I don't know if he continued that, but as soon as Laura came in, she continued it. And it happened for Rebecca. It had always been a percentage for Tom, and we see that that's in the works. But then Jim added himself on, and I did give you a copy of Vermont statutes on, which includes our charter, and that's the page I gave you, that's Section 14, City Treasurer. The interesting thing, it says in our charter, is it shall be the duty of the city treasurer to collect all water rates that may or shall year after become due for the use of the city water under regulations and ordinances. But then it says, but no compensation shall be allowed, said treasurer, for the performance of this duty. And so when initially, about five years ago, Jim added 10% for all of his employees and himself to be taken out of water and sewage, and then the next year, Laura Dolgan just upped it to 25%. Nobody raised that issue at the time, and this is a real question of whether or not any of Jim's work and his people's work for water and sewage should be attributed to water and sewage going forward, and certainly we should, we should not, we should not go back and force water and sewage to pay for it. So I'm really concerned about these issues.
Understood. So I'm going to just address some of that. I think it's really clear that we understand that there was totally a misunderstanding when the concept of take a percentage, a lot of cities and towns took a percentage, but then it just kind of like got out of hand here, so we understand that. Please also understand that the treasurer's office is also the clerk's office, which also adjusts some of the legal understanding here. I did research that without words. So he, his area cannot just be looked at as the treasurer's area that cannot, cannot take compensation, but he's also the clerk and has statutory beliefs there, so they can be allocating monies for, there. We totally get, understand about going back and refilling, that's not what we're talking about now. What we're talking about now is real numbers, let's come up with the right numbers, let's go forward, eliminate these percentages shy of, and I'm, and this is up to the council, of course, but the Department of Public Works, they do spend their time there, so their percentages are pretty much not skewed. But we are still going to do the actual time to watch it, so it's not going to be just say, okay, well, this percentage works. So, but thank you for this, and as we discussed, we both called the statute.
My pleasure.
Of course, you have.
And 9% of credit. I did allocate mine to water and sewer. For years, we did not, while everybody else was, all right? I talked to the auditors, said, water and sewer, you need to look at it as its own business. If you're doing work for another business, you need to charge your time. Okay, that's where that came from. And I understand what Ann's saying, but if something doesn't get done with that due-to or due-from money, okay, we're going to run into this line of credit business on the, for, on the general fund for years. So, I understand what she's saying, but I think it needs to be paid back.
So I'm going to kind of bring this back to the council now, because I know that you did a lot of research, and we're bringing it here, and we have, we don't really have a public comment right now, but I did want to give you that opportunity to speak, because I know you've been paying a lot of attention to this. So, back to the council. But any other discussion here on this, or should we move forward on this area, on any other areas in the packet?
I think we got some other choices to make.
Do you want to add anything from the packet that you want to go further over?
I guess just a comment. I was at a conference, the Vermont Town and City Managers Conference at the end of last week, and during the conference, we allocate some time to kind of bring up some hot topic items that we want some opinions or feedback from other city and town managers on. This is one that I did bring up, specifically, kind of twofold, the allocation of percentages. What we're seeing across other municipalities across the state are typically a 30% max. You know, Swanton's Village Manager, for example, Bill Sheets, he does 15% of water and sewer. Swanton does have their own electric utility company and a hydro dam that kind of plays into some of that, but he does do percentages, and he's at 15% water, 15% sewer. And that was the highest percentage I saw in the room from city managers. The second piece to that was I did ask them, I said, the due-to, due-from in Emmerich kind of shows this dollar amount, what would your recommendation be? Obviously, this didn't happen overnight, it was multiple years in the making for that due-to, due-from to grow to the 1.5 million or so. Their recommendation across the board was to not take out a loan to pay it back, and that we do kind of what we did in reverse, and kind of deplete that due-to, due-from over time. And so that was their recommendation, and both of that came from, you know, Mopulier and Waterbury as well, of, you know, they said, just slowly raise your rates until you can chip away at it in roughly the same time that that was, was done.
Thank you for that, because I know we discussed that, and I wanted to be sure you brought that up. And that's why it's important to go to those conferences and talk to the other, you know, cities and towns in here, and share those, you know, networking somewhere. Yes.
I don't have a problem doing that, Jonathan, but it's going to be a long haul rate increases to pay back a million and a half dollars. I mean, years of increases, not slight ones either.
Took us, what, eight to 10 years to get into it? They recommended doing it, eight to 10 years to get out of it?
I don't have a problem with that, but I think it needs to be somehow paid back.
Certainly.
And the longer it takes that way, Madam Mayor, the more we go on the line of credit business.
Understood. And so, yeah, but I think what Jonathan is saying, it was raised, and he wanted everyone to hear the feedback, so you can see the different options, and that, of course, pretty much, it's reinforcing what you said, that over all these years, there was no increase, and now it's caught up. And so pretty much what they're saying is, you didn't do all these increases over the year, well, bite the bullet and now play catch-up, so.
It took eight years to get there, it may take 10 or 12 to get back to get that.
Right. So I know that the treasurer is looking for a possible decision on something here, if anybody is open to that, or you want to just digest and revisit this on Monday's meeting?
Well, I don't know, if it's not done by the first, then it's not going to be done this year.
Right.
Yeah, it's not done by the first of November.
Then it's June, right?
They moved the increase back to June 15th, half a year with no increase. Let's have council decision.
So you want to chat about that?
Sure. My hesitancy is, it's a big increase again. $20 to $25 per quarter can hit people hard. I do know we need to fill in that deficit and start filling the gaps and whatnot, so that's where I'm, I'm really hung up of. How big do we want the hurt to be?
I, I know what you're saying, and I don't want my rates to go up either. I mean, some years, my wife may use a lot of water, and we're willing to pay for it for what we got, but I understand that, but.
Notice the wife got blamed.
Back to what Jonathan was saying, chipping away at it, I don't think it means a microscopic chip, it's got to be a chip.
I still want an increase, but I want it to be significant enough, but also not painful to anybody. I need to think a little more than that.
I'd do the same thing again.
You would use the same rates that we just, that we just used, is that correct?
Yeah.
What's your thought, Rick?
I'd be willing to make that motion, and if there's a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay, well, why don't you make the motion, and then we'll see what happens.
I'll move that we make those same increases again, so that they would be effective in the spring, whatever that date is.
Effective November 1.
Effective November 1 for the spring billing, is that right, Jim?
Yeah.
At 8% for sewer metered, 26% for non-metered, 6% for both water metered and non-metered.
Oh, second, I think it's discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Sit down. You come. Mr. Chaney.
I'll speak as a resident, not the, some of the workers. First of all, let me know, I know, we know what problem the numbers are, okay? That's not a secret, it's a very difficult problem to fix, and if you'd like to know, you can certainly come in and tell your speech for us, and I'll be the general. If the problem, and this is why I'm speaking up as a citizen, I apologize. Jim's 100% correct, I don't disagree with what you're saying, however, that's not going to solve the problem, the problem is on the revenue side, okay, and it does need to be fixed. You're increasing yet at a flat rate. The problem is that the metered rates are not correct, they're woefully low, they've been woefully low from the beginning, and now you are continuing to increase the rates flatly, 26% for the people that have been paying their fair share along, okay? So what's going to happen, Rick, is if you have 100 people that are paying way less than they should, and your revenue projections are based on last year, and then you have 300 people more that have meters, okay, your revenue is going to continue to get off and get off and get off, okay? So you'll never have good revenue projections until you actually do the calculations based upon the metered rate, which is where your revenue problem is, okay? You will never stop the bleeding. I will say this, Jim's right, you need to do the increase because the financial problems are not that good, and you don't have time, he needs the money, you need to listen to him. However, the percentages that you're using are not equitable. At some point, you've got to do the calculation on the metered rates, which are why you are in the revenue problem you have, okay? Now, in addition to that, if you really want to fix it, you've got to come up with a plan to get everybody metered. Okay, and I know these are bigger issues, I do take exception with 26% for the non-metered rate, considering that is the metered rate that represents the deficit, and why are you singling that group out? Okay, so I understand that you can't take the time to do the calculation, because the work never got done, okay, over the last six years. However, okay, I do question the disproportionate application of the increase, and this is as a water and sewer customer, not as the zoning administrator, all right? So the answer is there, Rick, okay? And unless you fix the metered rates, which is a very difficult calculation, and probably requires a professional to do the analysis, then you are not going to ever fix the problem, and you can't predict your deficits, because every time you put a metered person on, it depends on how much water they use. In addition to that, understand that most of the non-metered customers are the 80-year-old grandmothers, okay? And the commercial properties, especially those that pay income taxes, municipal taxes, the prison, the hospital, da-da-da-da-da, are your biggest water loses, okay? So I do agree with Jonathan, that the sewer and water rates should pay back the deficit and not out of our tax base. However, if you do not fix the meters and their rates, you will continue to have problems, and I am seriously questioning why 26% on the non-metered rate.
That, there was a committee, I believe, that studied that for six months, and that's what they came up with.
Right, but I do that, like, right now.
Frank, if you can understand, once everybody's metered, because something's going down, that means the rates are going to meet the expenses.
But understood.
Again, that's another thing on top of what we're talking about.
That's another issue, right. Thank you.
It's a bigger problem.
No, it's important, that's why you were right about that.
Newport, I'm going to agree with Frank. My father always said, you have to, sometimes you have to spend money to make money. We have to get the entire city of Newport on the water meters, in order to find out exactly how much water we're using, and where there is water that's flowing that we're not paying for. As a metered household, I can tell you that when we got our meter on, it went way down, and you could, my husband will shoot me for saying this, if you could raise my rate 30%, and I still won't be back at what I was paying when I was, when I was a non-metered customer. And I, and I really do agree that we're not doing any justice to our older population who have not been able to be metered, maybe they weren't paying attention, maybe they didn't know anything about it, but that has got to be taken care of in order to fix this, and I think we need to look to an outside firm to get it done sooner rather than later.
We are actually moving on the meters, that's the project that's actually ongoing right now, so, but the key right now is this particular. But the key right now is this particular rate. That's the motion that's before everybody here, is the motion that we have.
Now, this is another discussion. Laurie, she is correct.
No, right, but I'm saying, but we are doing.
Our current rates are using two different systems.
Two different systems, that's right.
And trying to combine them to come up with something that could.
Right, but right now, what you're trying to do is.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
No, no, but right now, the, I just don't want the discussion to go all over the place. So it's right now, this is what we're talking about. Okay, we, the meter's going to be, trust me, it's going to be on another situation with updates about where we are. People are out there right now, going out there and looking. We do have this on a top priority. But right now, I'm throwing this out here to talk about this.
Pam Loud, City of Newport. It's not just the rate, it's also looking at how we got to this place. And we got to this place by a sort of sleight of hand that enabled a large percentage of money that would have been in the general fund to slither its way across to water and sewer. We, the citizens, were not allowed to question that. If we did question it or attempt to, we got shot down in flames, to the extent of a previous mayor throwing audit books up in the air, slamming them down on the table. And those of you who were on the council before will remember that. They will also remember what we were called and the name, the name calling in the general. It can only be called abuse. We were not the only citizens who asked these questions. It was obvious that what was happening was not okay. As this gets fixed, and clearly, I don't like the way it's going to have to be fixed, but it's going to have to be fixed, I get that. But what guarantee are we, the citizens, going to get? That we won't be back in this mess again? Because it could happen. There's another election coming up and people have said they want to run again, who were in this position before and enabled this. And it's a concern, it really is. I'm delighted that you're finally getting to the point of looking at what happened and actually listening and really doing a dive into the numbers. But this should have happened a long time ago, so we never got here in the first place.
Thank you. I just want to speak to what Rick asked. What was it that got us into this, losing money? Where we went from earning money to losing money? Was it, in fact, the meters and everybody else's rates dropped? I, I just have to raise that question because how many households went to, from paying a larger water rate to a lower water rate with the installation of meters? Just a question. And, and that is something that has definitely had an impact. But it's not just one specifically, but yes. Absolutely. That was a decision by the council and that, then we actually made that and we said we're going to move forward and get those meters moving. And we are doing that because we realized that particular decision perhaps should have been rethought. And so, going back to what Mr. Cheney brought up, I think everybody is spot on with Mr. Cheney. And yes, that did have an impact. Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, Jennifer Hopkins, Newport. I sat on the water committee, so I'd like to say a couple of things. One is, the percentages were put into the budget, the general budget and the water and sewer budget back under John Ward's administration. Some of those have not changed over the years, that I know of, at least not when the water and sewer committee started. One of the designs of the whole thing of the metered rates was to get more people on meters. They, the rate was established when we had 400 meters in the whole of the city of Newport. It was a guestment. It was designed to instill more people getting meters so we'd have more of a gist of what was happening. Because before it was really unfair. The hospital is now paying several thousand dollars for a meter that they paid $75 for because they are paying the rates. That's where you got the increase. And one last point is, that committee asked to remeet and we were refused. And that dates back, that's whatever, 2019 or 2018. And that's where the problem was because you had a member of the council who said, "If I approve this, then you can't raise the rates for five years." Five years brought us into COVID.
Thank you.
So anyways, some history.
Bringing it back. Who?
Scott Grimes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yeah, Scott Grimes, City of Newport. I was just curious, so the, the last time the rates were raised was 2018. There's been like, you know, 22% inflation since then? So it sounds like the current proposed rate increase will basically bring us back up to, you know, back up to what the current burn down should be, but isn't actually going to tackle any of the debt that's been accumulated. So how are we going to address that moving forward? Are we going to like bake in a 3% raise every year for the next five years or, you know, what's the plan there?
And we are going to be looking at that, Scott, and we are going to be coming up with a plan. This was the initial discussion, just to hear what the treasurer needs to get us for, what he needs for November 1st. And so we are going to be looking at this and then coming up with a longer planned strategy. Okay, back to the council. Any further discussion, thoughts?
Yeah, two things.
Mm-hmm.
One is a question, really. I understand, if I remember correctly, Jim, from a brief conversation I had with you a week or so ago, that the Pearly Niles Fund exists to support people who have particular financial hardship in the city of Newport. Can, can somebody just describe the, kind of what the parameters are of that? Because part of what I'm wondering is whether, if we have people who are particularly hard hit by this, if that fund can be used to try and alleviate on a case-by-case basis the hardship that we're creating by trying to do this overall fix?
Yeah, I, will I answer? Yeah, it can. Had to be 60 years old, you've got to be a resident of Newport. It's value for the health, welfare and happiness of the people that apply. We've used it, we've been able to use it to pay their taxes, medical bills, that type of thing. Buy fuel oil they can't afford. So it's there. The thing with the Niles Fund, we can only use the interest income, okay? You can't touch the principal of it at all. Okay? They can get $400 twice in a five-year period. I have a little chart that I keep track of who got it, how much and what year it was. Basically, that's it.
Thank you.
I mean, the council can put it out there, the Niles Fund's available if you want. I mean, it's never, they never have, but you can. I mean, it's, it's there to use.
It's something that I would certainly, I mean, you know, there's no, there's no way to sugarcoat this. But I, I do find it a compelling argument that the people who are least prepared to handle this rate increase are the ones who are likely to be hardest to hit by the rate increase. So if there's some way that we can make it known that with a modest amount of application process, you can, you can actually get some support, it seems to me it would be worth our while as a council to make that happen.
I can, I can send a memo or to Erie Agency on Aging or something like that. But they've got to be residents of the city.
Right. And then.
We can do that, that's not a problem.
I guess one last thing, having made the motion, I just want to be really clear that, that the very, the next conversation we've got to have is what, what in the world it's going to look like to try and get us to a balanced budget this year? That balances on both the generate, the, the general operating budget side and the water and sewer side. And, you know, that raises some interesting questions for me. If, if it's impossible to get to a water and sewer budget that balances this year, then how do we own that reality? And, you know, I think we've made some, there are some first steps, right? The, the previous rate increase, this rate increase would help if we pass it, I think, to try and get us there. Moving the allocation around that we've been discussing will help us to get it there. And once we've done those things, I want to know, what's the gap still likely to be? And how are we going to be, how are we going to fess up to that gap? You know, even if it's, you know, we're going to have to take money out of the general operating fund to do it. Like, I, I want a, a clear statement about how we're going to ma, manage that gap. And then I want to know what we're going to do on the operating fund side at the same time to assure that we aren't digging a bigger hole on that side of the budget.
Well, I can, I can tell you after the water sewer fund don't meet their obligation, where the money's going to come from. It's going to come out of the general fund.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, that's my assessment too. And if that's going to take place, I want to know at the beginning of the year and I want a budget for that, that the general operating budget's going to take, not just over, all of a sudden get surprised by it a year down the road.
Let me just say, I haven't got the, this year, last year's budget back yet. But the September 15th increase and this next one, we won't know until the budget this year.
I understand, I understand.
Which is going in August.
So I guess my law, would it be a projection of the two plans of, if we tack out a law that just keep increasing over time, where the stopgap's going to be? So we can see those numbers? Because tonight, we have to make a decision, but going forward, we need to, we need to see more numbers.
Yeah, somewhere in my file, I got that whole analysis I came up with.
I think I did, I remember somewhere.
And Jonathan and I and the treasurer are going to be meeting right now. And let's, this was just the beginning, was we knew that. And Jim needed this, for this discussion with the deadline and we know that we had to look at the actuals on the percentages and we had to see where it was skewed and we had to start to look at the expenses. And now Jonathan has a handle on how to drill down into the various areas and we'll get further into that. So I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay?
Nay.
Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is the Fire Department Personnel Matters Potential Executive Session, 1 VSA Section 313A1. May I please have a motion to enter into executive session and invite the interim fire chief and the, and Mr. Carmine and is Mr. Leclair here? And then, and at a specific time, call the city manager. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Eyes have it, the motion is carried and we are in executive session. We are out of executive session. The next item on the agenda is Employee Evaluations of City Official Executive Session, 1 VSA Section 313A3. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? And then, after, call in the city manager. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Eyes have it, the motion is carried, we are in executive session and. We're out of the executive session. No action was taken on either of the executive sessions. The next item is new business. President Fashon? Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember O'Keechey?
Nothing, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Well, I'll do this on the new business, but. First ask, like, some information on account receivable stuff.
Thank you.
So I, that's not here. So I give a couple of examples, the two, two larger ones. Just so you can see where those expenses are. Uh, the things like, now, these are things that we're billing people, we provide the service.
Right.
Okay, so like, correctional facility, we bill them. Forever Young Club, we do something for them. Juddy Separate, separate service, I assume that was something that had to do with the summer fest or something like that. Or parties, something like that. So you can see, these are all things that they do work. We do things for them.
Right.
It's not like it, not like they're doing things for us, we're doing things for them.
What a shock.
And this is a cumulative, these totals.
Okay.
It just keeps up.
Thank you.
Goes up and down whether they're paying. They pay, it goes down, if they don't, it goes up.
Got it, okay, great.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
I can't help but notice that $165,000 plus is owed to the city of Newport by Northeast State Correctional Facility. It's over 120 days overdue.
165, 135.
135, 910.
Well, for mon, of, public safety is different. Fair enough. 135 plus 30,000 from Department of Public Safety.
Yeah, that's a sewer problem they had done.
So where do we stand on?
So I'm meeting with the higher-ups over there and they are going through different things and they're pulling the leakage and getting meter reports and we're, we're talking through that.
Are we charging them interest? When it's overdue, I'm, I'm, it's a legitimate question. We're paying interest to pay our bills.
Well, but here's the key, this is a discussion that we're having with them because there was an issue on the types of billing. So now it's a true up.
Okay.
So that's where we are. So first, we're coming up with the magic number of what is owed. And then we'll figure it out after that, but they are being extremely helpful now.
Okay, that's what we think they owe. Could be different.
Well, actually, I've been speaking with them and they've got, I gave them the information now on when the leaks were, the continual leaks, everything was like August through November. And so now they're pulling their reports and so. We got the, we're at the right higher-ups at this stage now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I know you weren't here when this first started, so. So it's not at a lower level at this point, it's at a higher level.
So I got one other thing that I can pass you. So Clark wanted in for the list of all the accounts, special accounts we've got.
Oh, great, thank you.
These are all the monies we've got in special accounts, their own accounts. These are all monies that are committed or set aside for these specific things. And the Niles and the cemetery funds aren't on there because they're really, they're not city accounts.
Got it. Okay.
Be managed over the Niles. So that's everything we've got.
Thank you.
And the current totals.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll get them to Clark or somebody can get Clark.
I'll get him to.
Huh?
I'll get him to.
Yeah, he's the one that asked for it.
I, I have a question, question?
Here's the yellow one.
Is this one? This is the receivable, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All good, Jim?
Yeah, that's all I.
Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashon?
Yes, last Monday, we announced our extra mile heroes. I'm currently working on collecting pictures of them so that we can present them at our next meeting with a proclamation. It's been a long time. That's all.
Great. Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember O'Keechey?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
Okay, and then to, Councilmember Charbonneau, and we all have discussed, he brought up the fact that we should do a proclamation regarding the hospital and I said I would have that for the next meeting, so we'll do that, okay? At the next meeting as well.
I, I do have. I got a call from Brian Smith in Derby.
Oh, yeah.
They'd like a letter from the council about that, about the hospital, or the hospital sent to the town clerk up there so he can put it with his.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to do ours in a different fashion, but we're going to do the proclamation.
I told him I didn't bring it up.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournments.
I make that motion?
A motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? And the meeting is adjourned at 10:22 PM.